Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the 2022 Youth Commission Candidate Form. My name is Ashley Manrique Puentes, and I am a representative for Central.
And my name is Morgan Topol, and I'm the representative for Hale, Nathan Hale. To start off, each candidate will have a brief minute to introduce themselves, and if time allows, there will be time for a closing statement at the end of the form.
The Youth Commission created each question that the candidates must answer with honesty, with much honesty as possible in 90 seconds.
As you answer each question, please keep an eye out for the timekeeper, and when the bell dings, your time is up.
You will have one minute for introductions. We'll start with Ms. Lee.
Hi, I'm Rebecca Lee. I'm a mother of four. My oldest graduated last summer. I have, my son Kayden is a sophomore at Hale, and then I have my son Kayson, who is a seventh grader at FLW, and my daughter Victoria, who is a sixth grader at FLW. All are highly active, very involved in sports, so they keep me running from one end of the city to the next. Occasionally, I'm at the wrong end of the city with the wrong kid, but I usually keep it pretty straight. And I, if you would have asked me five years ago if I would have ever imagined myself to be in this spot, I would have said absolutely not. I would have never imagined. But with the last two years, having gone the way that they did, a lot of things, you know, that we've had to deal with, I never would have expected, and this is one of them, and kind of brought me to where I am right now.
You're next.
Boom, to me?
Yeah.
I'm next.
We'll go that way all night.
Okay.
I'm Bill Eustrock. I am running for my third term, which, like Rebecca, sitting here today, if somebody would have told me that 10, 12 years ago, I would have been like, you're crazy. You know, six years ago, when I decided to run for the school board, we were kind of really a district in crisis. We had just kind of gotten into the, should we or shouldn't we have open borders? I was a parent that was in favor of having neighborhood schooling, and that was kind of the issue at the time that I wanted to fight for. And I thought the best way to fight for it was to get into school board. And here I am, six years later. I'm extremely proud of the six years that I've been on the board, and it is quite a bit of work, and I'm proud of the work that we've done. And I'm looking for, running for one more time.
Hey, I'm Joe Becker. Got two little girls over at Wilson. They just turned 11. They're fifth graders. My wife and I moved here in 2009. I'm originally from Greendale. I went to St. Alphonsus Grade School, then I went to Catholic Memorial in Waukesha because I was tired of Greendale. I graduated from UW-Milwaukee with an English degree, but I was studying secondary education first. I was going through my student teaching and had a little bit of what I refer to as an imposter syndrome. I felt unprepared, like I didn't have much to offer the kids I was working with. So ended up finishing in English and then teaching anyway. After teaching for a couple of years at one of the area choice schools, I decided to change careers, studied engineering for a couple of years, detached retina later. I decided to get back into the insurance world, and I worked for about a decade in managed care in Medicaid for the Wisconsin, one of the Wisconsin HMOs. And I work for a Medicare plan now. Is it a double ding? Did I?
Good evening. My name is Jeff Sikic. I'm running for a fourth term on the school board. My first partial term, I was picked by the board at that time because a gentleman had resigned due to some conflict of interest. He wanted to do some coaching. And I interviewed along with 12 other people, and I was fortunate enough to be selected by the board to be on. And I won the last, or been part of the winning team on the last three elections. This four, definitely sure whether I win or lose, is my last term on the board. I happen to be 69 years old, and I do not want to wake up when I'm 72 and have to go to a school board meeting. I'm in a little unique position. I don't have any children in the district. I don't have any grandkids in the district. However, I taught here for 28 years and coached, or taught elementary physical education and coached football at Nathan Hale for 20 years. Actually had Mr. Eustrock as a player. Thank you.
All right, to start the evening off with our first question, we'll have Saoirse come up.
Should you be elected, what is the number one thing you wish to accomplish, and how are you going to achieve it? Mr. Eustrock, you can go first.
I think probably the number one thing that I'm hoping happens is the referendum passes. I'm in support of the one high school solution. I believe that as a city and the strides that we've made as a community the last nine, 10 years on how we've changed the perception of our community, I think the schools are kind of like the next in line, next to fall in line. And I think if we can pour our resources into one place for our students to have the best opportunities to succeed, I believe that is one campus. You know, there's some information out there with M A T C partnering with us and some dual associate degree opportunities. Bringing all of our, you know, arts and theater and athletic programs under one roof, I think will bring tremendous opportunities to our students. And I think it would bring, shine a light on this city. And it's, it's generational. So, you know, it's a once-in-a-generation kind of change that we can make here. And we're, I think the last six years, we put a lot of things in line to have this opportunity and to present it to the public to see if they agree with the plans that we set forth. So that would be my number one priority at this point. If that does not pass, then we're going to reassess and go back to the drawing board and see what, you know, what would be the next step, so.
As Rebecca said a moment ago, I think the tone of things nationally have really taken a bad turn. That's really the reason that I decided I was going to try to get into this. I think creating a better sense of trust in the community is... Oh, sure, sure, sorry. Okay, as I was saying, oh, there we go. Yeah, I can hear it. So, you know, trying to build trust, your better communication is, and better communication is really the key, I think. Everything else follows from that. A lot of what I do at work is based on building relationships. As I mentioned, I work for a Medicare plan, but it's as a national manager. So I work with people across 11 different states. It depends on building relationships and establishing rapport with people. Really diverse group of people. I think I work with, I estimate about 75 or 100 different people around the country. So I think when you start from a good relationship, with a good foundation, understanding how to speak with people, I think everything else falls a lot more easily after that. It's a lot easier to communicate business needs when they can trust you and they know that you're going to do what you say that you're going to do, then it makes everything flow a lot more, a lot more effectively. I'd say what I want to do is try to be more face-to-face with people.
Well, what I would like to accomplish in the next three years is something that everybody on the board should want to do. We have to right-size our district. We have too many buildings for the number of students we have. And the number of students we have keeps declining. That's like throwing money out the window, put a lot of money into a school where you can have twice as many kids in than we have right now. As Bill said, it's, the referendum should help, but that's not part of this question. You ask if we're elected, what will we do? Because that's how it's going to be determined before the election goes on. That is very important, and we have to still lobby our legislators to get more money put into education. We've been very financially frugal over the last several years to get us back above ground. We need to continue with that. But the biggest thing is we need to right-size the district. People don't want to hear that. Nobody wants their school where their kids go to be closed, but something has to, or like I said, we're putting money into. If the referendum doesn't pass, it's going to cost more to upgrade Central and Hale than it would to do the changes that we're asking for at Nathan Hale. People will say, how come not Central? Well, Central, the fieldhouse is sinking. It was built on a swamp. The main building, that was the old Hale, was built on pilings. There was supposed to be a pool in that building back in '39 when they built that. Boy, I didn't know which one I waited for.
Gotcha.
I got music.
Okay, for me, like I say, for my reason coming in was basically the last two years and everything that we've had to deal with. And watching my kids and what they went through as far as facing the pandemic and all it brought, as far as their school years in particular, I want to get back, you know, some of what they lost in those years in school, you know, and get back to some of those events and those things in school. You know, I look at my, my son, my oldest son that graduated last summer, and unfortunately, you know, he graduated. And yes, I think he got a lot out of school, and you know, he'll be a successful adult. I'm not worried about that, but there are so many experiences that he didn't get to take advantage of because of that. And I want to get that back for these other kids sooner than later. So I want to be a part of that and get back to it as fast as we can. And, and the other thing, too, that personally I experienced in the last year as the other half of that is I want to see the teachers get more backing from admin. Again, it's, it's just something that hit me, that I saw personally, that I was really bothered by, and I just want to see more support for our staff and for our coaches. So those are my two main motivators, and that I want to see something come out of it.
The second question is by Alicia.
Okay, "Some schools in the district have had troubles getting substitute teachers. What do you think the district should do to solve this problem? Do you have any creative solutions to bring in new subs?" Mr. Becker, you will go first.
Something that I think we could look into is what we refer to in healthcare as value-added benefits. Things like health club reimbursements, things like daycare reimbursement, things of that sort. Something that maybe we can't offer in straight salary benefits, but we can do things that'll supplement their salary by helping to reduce those kinds of costs. I think involving them in the, in the school programs as well. Maybe if you have something like a permanent sub where they move throughout the district. If you give them a little bit more ownership, if you have them involved in clubs and after-school programs, perhaps if they don't have a classroom to teach in that day, maybe they can be involved in another way. I know that Wilson, for example, has, as I believe the other elementary schools do, they have a number of programs. There's the garden club, there's the chess club. They have a robotics club that they're starting. All kinds of ways that I think perhaps when the teachers are stretched a little bit too thin, maybe we can lean on our long-term subs and something, something that will create a little bit more community among our substitutes, so they don't feel like substitutes. They feel more like long-term employees. I think something along those lines might be useful, at least in changing the culture and building a little bit more sense of community.
We've been fairly low when it comes to subpay in the district, district area here, and we are not unique to that situation of not being able to find subs. Almost everybody in the southeast part of the state has trouble getting subs, be it Nicolay at Greendale, or us, Waukesha, anyone. What we've got to do, I think, is maybe be able to be a little bit more flexible with the teacher licensing for subs. If you have somebody who's a retired welder and wants to teach welding, I don't think you need a college degree if you've been doing it for 10 years on the job. And that would be great on-the-job training for our students. The other thing would be, you know, we do have, our major, large elementary and all of the junior high and high schools have building subs. The issue is to try to get them in and do it. Most of them, once they're here, stick around. COVID really cut into the bank of subs that we had to draw from. And I'm not sure that pot will ever be filled back up again. We did, like I mentioned, we did raise our subpay to try to be comparable with the area schools. For a sub, that's basically what they're looking at. They're going to sub where they get the most money. No places around here have subs that have benefits. There are no bargaining units for them, so they're kind of on the limb, so they need whatever we can afford to give them.
Yeah, I'll be honest, I'm not really sure these days. I don't know what the numbers look like. You know, yes, of course, if we could offer more pay, I'm sure that would be a fabulous idea. I do, I love Jeff's idea, you know, as far as, especially because trades are becoming so much more popular as far as, I mean, I look at last year when my son graduated, and I, you know, listen to all the, the last, you know, games and, you know, the last sporting events and stuff, and, you know, they always talk about the seniors and what they're going to do. And it was quite amazing to listen to how many of those seniors actually were going into trades versus four-year colleges. And, and I'm, I'm one of those where I'm going, hey, do what's going to pay your bills and make you happy, whether it be a four-year college or technical, whatever. And so I think it's kind of a neat idea if we, if that would be something that we could do to bring in, you know, a tradesman to say, hey, you know, yeah, I can do this for an hour. I think that would be a great idea, and try and get people to do that. You know, something like that. Building subs, I know I have heard of that before, but I know that, yeah, like Jeff said, too, you know, COVID, unfortunately, really tanked a lot of districts in a lot of ways that I just don't know what the perfect answer is right now based on, you know, the financials and the bodies, to be perfectly honest, without really sitting down and looking at numbers as far as what we have within our reach.
Yeah, I think, you know, the easy answer is to tap in, you know, pay more money, which we, we did increase our subpay to be more competitive. But I'd like to see us kind of go with kind of targeting. There's two groups I believe that we can target to, to really kind of maximize the potential of the, of substitute teachers. And the first one is retired teachers. You know, what kind of incentives can we develop to bring back retired teachers back into our district and, and ask them to, you know, I would look for the retired teachers to maybe step into the role of the high school substitute and kind of push that more, unless their specialty was elementary or something like that. And then I would like to partner with, like, you know, local colleges and their teaching programs. You know, that, you know, year three in your teaching, maybe we can provide some intern opportunities where they serve as substitute teachers, because they also have to do their student teaching. We know that, that that's going to have to take place. But if we build these relationships and these pipelines through the universities to our district, I think we can kind of capitalize on those relationships and trying to fill that pipeline with, maybe we incentivize them. You come sub for us, you don't have your license in this. We provide you some financial backing to go get licensed in this particular field, those sort of ideas, so.
All right, for the next question, we have Brianna.
"Over the years in the district, many teachers have left to work at other school districts. What should the district do besides just giving more money to retain teachers?" Mr. Sikic, you will start.
Well, one of the first things we feared, I resigned this committee when we started, was have the health clinic for our staff located in the old administration building on 93rd and Lincoln. That is free to all of our full-time staff. They carry a lot of the most popular drugs, statins, diabetes drugs, all of that. Right there, they can get them for free. There's no office charge, there's no copay. And fortunately, our insurance provider, the WEA, is helping to underwrite that clinic for us, so it's not all coming out of our pocket. And we've heard a lot of positives about that, because let's face it, healthcare costs can put you in a poor house pretty quick. Who's going to turn down a free office visit? It's staffed by a P A, but he has resources and can refer people for specific healthcare needs. And if you just need a, like, a general practitioner or internist, that he can get you off. So that's, that's one thing we've, I think, right off the top is the number one thing that we use to get new teachers in. Sometimes the newer teachers, they're young, like, like I used to be, and I think they're just indestructible, but reality sets in. It's like, why is it nice to be able to get a free visit and not have to wait? The hours are during the day, and we cover subs for the teachers to go in there.
You keep getting music.
How come I get music and they get it? Let me get music.
I have a lot of teacher friends, and in conversations with them, a lot of what I hear is wanting to be seen as professionals. And another thing is the support, as I mentioned earlier, is they just, there's a lot of times where they feel like they're kind of left floundering on their own. They don't feel like they're getting the backing from, whether it be right in their own building, from their principals, or the upper admin. And they just want to feel like they have the support. I have a couple of teacher friends in particular that have had some very challenging students, you know, whether it's behavioral or, you know, whatnot. I, I don't know for sure. But they're so limited in what they can do, you know, and more so these days than 10 years ago. And they just, their, their hands are tied. And so, you know, but when they ask, you know, what can I do or for help, they just kind of feel like they're just kind of, you know, brushed aside and not really given anything. And so they just, they need the backing, they need the support. They're burning out. You know, and they want to keep doing what they love, but they need the help to do it. And they need more stronger guidelines as to, in those difficult situations. What can they and can't they do? There's a lot of gray area, apparently. And so again, just having that backing and being treated like a professional and not just a filler in, you know, they, they need that. They want to feel that they, they deserve that, that backing and that support.
I would say that, you know, a stat I once read in, or saw at one of my management training seminars that I have to attend for my work and stuff is, you know, 65 to 70% of people that leave their job, leave their job because of their bosses. So my goal, and what I would love to see is we have, we hire the best principals, you know, and look to hire the best bosses, and let those bosses run their buildings and their culture as they see fit. You know, I think a lot of it has to do with the cultures in each individual building. You can go to one building and every, every teacher, every faculty member in that building is in love with that building and would never want to leave. And you go to some other buildings and it's like, what's going on here? You know, and so I think it begins with culture. I mean, I, I have, I know teachers in this district that have been here 30-some years. Well, they didn't, they didn't stay here because they're the highest-paid teacher in the, in the state. They stayed here because the place that they were at is a place that they loved, and they had a piece of, a mind and a lifestyle that, that they liked. Money isn't always the answer. It's culture and loving the place that you're a part of. And I think you'll choose a place that you love and that you feel a part of and that you, you're valued versus the money, probably 95% of the time.
I would piggyback a little bit on the last one that I was saying about value-added benefits for the substitute teachers. I think if you give free memberships or reduced memberships to the rec center, something like that, that's, again, that doesn't really cost the district anything, from what I understand. But it would be something that might be a minor draw. I think the most important thing in listening to teachers during the form that we had a month or so ago, in addition to some side conversations I've had with teachers, is that they really just want to have a voice. One conversation I had with a teacher, she advised that they've been asked many, many times to give families grace as they come back from the pandemic and lockdowns, but they're receiving little to none themselves. We've heard a good bit about professional development days sometimes being a bit more than they can bear as they're trying to bring on new literacy programs, through the scholastic program. I was hearing that it would be nice to have just a free day to go and, as Rebecca said, I think, just be a professional. Let them determine how they're going to spend their own day in their classroom, whether it's grading papers, catching up, or just working with colleagues on new lesson plans. I think giving them clarity, giving them a voice. There were a lot of questions about the referendum as well. And again, I think just being better communicators and speaking more face-to-face with them and taking a true interest in what they, what they feel on things.
The next question is by Chris.
"If you were able, if your life became a movie, who would want to play your character?" Can Lee, Mrs. Lee, go first?
Oh, my goodness.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that question.
"If your life became a movie, who would you want to play it?"
This is not easy. Okay, the 30 seconds doesn't start until I actually start answering, right? Oh, gosh. Oh, my goodness. Well, I guess one of the first ones that comes to mind is Sandra Bullock. I guess because she is, she can be so powerful and so passionate. And, you know, especially with my kids, I can be extremely powerful and passionate. And if you ask my husband, very boisterous, which is why he'll never sit by me on the bleachers during any sort of sporting event. And so I think she'd do a really good job playing me and showing the, the passion that I have when it comes to my kids and anything having to do with my kids. So I think she'd be pretty good. I'll change her hair color, but she looks good as a blonde, so I think she'd be okay.
Well, you know, never thought about this, but I don't know if my life would be worth having a movie about. But I, you just, Harrison Ford, I mean, he was Han Solo. He's Indiana Jones. He was one of my favorite actors in the 80s. He played a wide range of characters. He was, had emotional characters. He had motivational characters. And that's kind of like how my life's been, you know, just like a roller coaster ride, so. Harrison Ford.
I would say Will Ferrell. He's just kind of goofy all the time. And if people who know me know, it, it just doesn't stop. My kids, it starts the second they wake up. I'm meowing at them like a cat. I'm just always, always, if I don't have to be serious, I'm just not going to be. I can if I have to be, and I'm, I'm happy to get down to work and, and use my brain. But I'd whole, I would absolutely prefer to be as, basically just say the, the most ridiculous, idiotic thing I can possibly say, and just see what people will believe sometimes. That's the, the way he is on camera, he's just always on the verge of busting out. Even if he's trying to be serious, he's just about to lose it. Underlying all that goofiness, though, there's just a sincerity that he conveys, I think, that I relate to. I have a tendency to really trust and to really, again, I keep on using the word relationships. I really value forming genuine relationships and bonds with people, whether it's at work or if it's playing sports. I'm always, I'm always, always, always high-fiving people if you know semi-pro. Always picking people up. Everybody love everybody. That is, that's a lot of what I am. That is, that's a lot of what I am.
Mine would be one of two, and unfortunately, both of them are not with us anymore, but I would pick Robin Williams or Jonathan Winters. Just because I was on the school board doesn't mean I was like an angel in school, but I was never mean or bullied, but if I could get somebody to laugh, oh, that was the start of a role. My wife will be someplace and I'll say something, somebody will laugh and she'll go, don't get him going! But laughter is such a great endorphin. You feel so good if you laugh. So I mean, you can ask some of the people here that, that are on board with me, when it gets a little too heavy, I gotta add a little levity in there, we gotta smile, have a little fun. If what you're doing is fun, it's not work, so those would be mine too.
All right, moving on, the next question's actually presented by me, is not as lighthearted as the previous one, but residents in the district are often hesitant to pay more taxes, but also want the schools to improve. What do you believe is the best way for the voters in the district to get accurate information and answers to their questions about the referendum? Mr. Eustok, you go first.
I think the first thing, first and foremost is, is to ask. I don't think there is any intention to mislead or, I think the intention is to be totally transparent with all this information. Like, I, I don't, I, I don't buy into the narrative that we are trying to be in any way misinform people. All of the information is on our website. If there's questions that people want, need answers to, there's people that can answer any question that you want, you know, and if you don't get the correct answer or an answer that is feasible for what you're asking, then there's other people you can ask. There's nobody that's unwilling to answer any question. I think it's always difficult to ask people to pay more in taxes, like that's just such a dirty feeling, like, you know, like we want more money. I, I don't believe for one second that what we're trying to do is build a brand-new school for our city because we need to build a brand-new school. What I think we need to do is build a culture and a community and an atmosphere where we're one community. And I think by having our high school as one, it's a building that's gonna last 50 to 70 to 100 more years like our buildings are currently, and that's how our, that's how we grow, that's how we do things as a community, is you have to invest in your community. And so I think we lined up our ducks in a row and we're asking, so it's up to the community to say yes or no.
Going back to the first answer that I was kind of fumbling around with, I think getting more face-to-face with people is really important. I was on the fact committee and I had the opportunity to see all the information and got to see all the, the building assessments and, and participate in that. But I've seen a lot of outstanding questions being asked by people who are, are critical and they have concerns about it, but I've seen all those on Facebook. Well, until I started my campaign, I had gotten off of Facebook because it's just such a toxic environment. Even the people who are really involved in Facebook, it's, we all spend so much time talking past one another and trying to be right. I think the information ends up kind of becoming secondary to winning the argument, which is, that speaks to the issues of the last couple of years where our tone has just gotten so ugly. It seems like being face-to-face with people. I feel like if we'd gone out to every school and started a year ago, or maybe that's, you know, being a little bit ambitious, but it seems like the, the questions are piling up in the last month and it's, this is really easy to say after the fact, observing it, not being in that position of being on the board and making those decisions. But I think it's clear that people need more than online resources. I spent 40 minutes in my neighbor's kitchen the other day, they're retired, they've been in the neighborhood for 40 years, one of them's a former city worker, very much in the know, but they're asking me, like, we don't go online, we, we don't go, we, we have no idea where to find this information, face-to-face.
We provide the information, so when people say we're not being transparent, I, I would take issue with that. All the information is there. Now, we can't make the people believe it, but it is there and it's truthful. Like I said, we can't decide how you're gonna interpret it. And when it comes to like the raising of taxes, you know, we're all taxpayers too. We don't get anything free out of this, so I have a hard time with, you know, one of the forums we're at, a person that said, well, my house value is gonna go up. I don't know that I'd mind if I got my bill, tax bill, and my value of my house went up, I'd be happy about that. And good schools, raise your property values as opposed to areas of the city that aren't as well built up and aren't as new, I should say. The, any of you that are interested in the referendum, I brought pamphlets and flyers that are over on the table that says West Alister, grab one before you leave, no charge. That's it.
I was actually asking my, that very question myself when I first decided to take this journey, because I really didn't know much about it myself. And so having known Bill for quite a few years prior to this, I tugged on his ear and said, okay, tell me about it. So sometimes you just gotta go to the source, you know, I mean, yes, there's the social, you know, there's the social aspects, you can go on there and look, but, and like Joe said too, face-to-face, you know, sometimes you just gotta seek them out and have the conversations. And, and too, in a lot of these forums that we have had and a lot of assigned conversations that have come about it, it is a great way to, to get the, the information across. I know when we met with the Teachers Association, you know, a lot of the teachers, after we had our forum with them, were like, wow, you know, this was huge because Jeff and Bill both were able to share a lot of information with them, having both been on the board already, obviously they could share far more than Joe and I knew about having not been on the board before. And they were like, we didn't know that, we didn't know that, you know, whether they didn't know where to go look for it or hadn't, I don't know. And so yeah, unfortunately, if we could go back in time and sit in, in a ton of these small breakout sessions, I think it would be huge. So yeah, you know, sitting face-to-face, having the conversations, you know, and going online and, and just searching for it and doing the best you can to educate yourself with the information that's out there, you know, is the best way you can do it. It's amazing what I've learned myself, just sitting here in these forums, listening to these guys talk and, you know, the public that knows stuff too, that's done digging
The next question is by Brianna.
A black history course is now offered at Central and Hale. Do you believe that implementing more classes like this to the curriculum is beneficial for the younger generation? Mr. Becker, you will go first.
Absolutely, without question. I think teaching a more varied and complete history is absolutely essential for our society to move forward. It feels like for a long time, we get what's referred to as a whitewashed history. It tells a portion, but it tells just a, a bare skeleton of, of the reality. And I'm not talking about an explicit, completely detailed description of slavery for six-year-olds, but let's mythologize a little bit less, let's pat ourselves on the back a little bit less, let's be clear, let's be honest. Let's face it, the, one of the things I like best about West Alis is that it's not like Greendale where I grew up. I shared this in another forum as well. In, in the reading that I've done in the last couple of years, I, I read The Color of Law, which is a book about the 20th century and housing segregation. That's when I figured out that the town where I grew up, I, I knew it was built in 1938 because you go down the, the center of town and you see when it was founded. Just from reading that book, I understood, well, this town was probably built exclusive, and it was. I, I found some documentation that that's what it was. West Alis has some of that same history too, and I didn't know that until about a year ago, I'm 45. But I think knowing more about it is better. I think the diversity of West Alis demands that we tell a little bit more complete history, a more well-rounded history that reflects who we are.
I just want to jump on the end of Joe's there, the history of it. Demographics have changed, the way history is looked at has been changed, whether it's positive or negative, is an individual's opinion, but it needs to be presented, it needs to be presented from both sides and both sides fairly, without any editorializing, just facts. And when people see just the facts, I think some eyes will be opened on our past history. And I don't know that there's any age where that's too young to start learning. Maybe the, the depth of what you go into wouldn't be there, maybe spread it out a little thinner, make it age-appropriate, but I'm all for, I'm all for the diversity in the classroom and in the schools and by history.
Yeah, I, I agree with Jeff, as long as it's factual and, you know, you kind of stick to the script, so to speak, I'm totally fine with that. I mean, I think, you know, the generations need to know, you know, what went on, you know, my only hesitation is just, you know, listening to my kids and how some teachers spin things, I mean, just being honest, you know, listening to my kids and how some teachers put their own, you know, their own ideas in and things like that, that's the only part that does rub me the wrong way sometimes, you know, just like that election time, you know, my kids would come home telling me how, you know, my teacher said this today, my teacher said that today, you know, and those are the only things that, that definitely can rub me the wrong way, but as long as it's kept factual and everything, no, I totally agree. You know, it's definitely important, an important part for them to know about.
Absolutely. I mean, diversity is a strength. I think, you know, when I think about these types of things, I, I just, I want us to be doing it together, you know, I, I don't, I, I see, you know, we're always, we're always being separated and, and it's great to appreciate our cultures and, and recognize everybody's culture, but we can do it together. You know, I don't want it to be a situation where we have a Spanish and, and a black history and then the only kids that are taking it are those people of those cultures. I want everybody to be taking everything together and coming together and learning it together. You talk about the facts and, you know, you can dive into what facts are the real facts and what's the real his, you know, it's just gotta be an honest, truthful conversation and we can't be afraid and we gotta do it together. You know, I really firmly believe in uniting and, and doing the, you know, and recognizing and respecting, but you're doing it in a united way.
All right, moving on, the next question will be presented by Chris.
If you had a time machine, what year would you go to? And why? Jeff?
Probably 1953 because I could watch myself being born. And I could watch the Yankees beat the Brooklyn Dodgers, four games to one in the World Series. Doris Day was singing, "Que sera, sera", or I mean, I know, "Don't quit your day job", but that number just sticks in my head. Many great people were born in 1953, I sure wish I was one of them. But yeah, 1953, that's right. I've never seen me as a baby. You wanted me to talk louder, longer.
Yeah, I needed more time, thanks Jeff. I guess, actually, I think I'd go back to like 1991, maybe, early 90s. I really enjoyed my high school years and now I look back and think, God, it was easy compared to what you guys are dealing with now. I mean, I thought I was bad then, but now I look at it and think I'd take that any day. Particularly my sophomore year, it was just, I really loved it. I, I, I loved my sophomore year of high school and, and it did, life seemed so much easier and of course now, if I could go back then knowing what I know now, wouldn't we all? Yeah, it was just, it was a good time and it just, and now I think of how easy things were then and, and how I feel for you kids now. I apologize to my kids every day, I'm so sorry, I'm so sorry for the crap you're dealing with now. If I could just put a Band-Aid on it and fix it, boy, I would, you know, so um, yeah, I guess I'd go back to the early 90s, I'd appreciate it a lot more, that's for sure.
Do we have to go back? Or can I go forward?
Back.
Nice try, Bill.
I'd go back to 2009. Before my kid was diagnosed with Ben's disease.
I'd have to say 1967, because that's when Jimmy Hendrix played at the Monterey Pops Festival and kind of launched his career in the United States. Growing up, I, my older brother got me into acid rock and all, all the old bands, so I spent most of my early years listening to that kind of music, just loved it, spent hours and hours and hours sharing CDs with friends, sharing tapes with friends. So I've always wanted to go back and see all those old bands play. Another thing is I got to see Kareem Abdul-Jabbar as a Buck, I get to see the Bucks win the 71 championship. And it's only 10 years before I was born, so I'd only be 55 or so today and I'd still be able to enjoy Spotify and having internet radio in the car and all the fantastic advances in medicine and science and be able to see us land on Mars. Just back far enough to see a little bit of some of the things that I grew up wishing I had seen, but still be here.
The next question would be by Shelley.
If the referendum does not pass, what are your ideas to fix the problems that some of our older buildings like Central have? This question first goes to Mrs. Lee.
Not being all that familiar with the financials and stuff, not being on the board yet, I guess at a glance, I would sit down and see how we could tweak it in hopes to get it to pass eventually, but as far as addressing issues at Central now, taking a look and maybe, you know, prioritizing what things would need to be addressed more immediately and trying to attack things that way if, you know, in the, in the future, if it was not going to pass, you know, and, and see what we'd have to address immediately in the event that it wasn't going to, but in hopes that the referendum would, that we wouldn't have to keep kind of Band-Aid, you know, Band, putting a Band-Aid on the situation, would be my hopes. But yeah, that's, I guess what I would do is, is take a look at what would have to be dealt with immediately and going from there and how would we handle that.
I think we, we would continue with the rightsizing of the district and, you know, that would entail trying to get down to nine or eight elementary schools. Once that is determined, those committees are meeting right now and they're going through the criteria as to which schools are gonna meet the criteria that we're looking at. We are also gonna downsize to two middle schools, so that means one middle school would be, would be gone. And then I think we would probably have some sort of committee, fact committee, you know, see with the people, I mean, it's really clear that our buildings- I mean, it's really clear that our buildings, we need upgrades. So, if it's the elementary path or if it's the middle school path, I think we would do what we did with the fact committee, get the, get, you know, what the community is interested in doing and what that dollar amount is, uh, which is all the stuff that we did currently for this current referendum. And I think we felt like our biggest return on our investment for the first phase would be the high school solution, which gives everybody in our city one, everyone's going to be a part of that instead of picking three or four elementary schools to do stuff with or, or whatever. So, I think the plan would be to continue to right-size the district and then assess what the community wants. Are, are we going to upgrade elementary schools? Are we going to upgrade, uh, middle schools? But it's clear that we do have some things to do to our buildings and, and fix some stuff and create some better learning environments for our students.
Similar to what Bill was saying, I think it would really have to be not necessarily going back to the drawing board, maybe going out to each school, having a lot of face time, having a lot of committee time with every single school committee that we can, inviting everybody to come in and be a part of the decision-making process. Again, my perspective was skewed because I did have the opportunity to see it, but seeing all the comments and, and seeing a lot of concerns about the costs associated, concerns about the appearance, again, as both Bill and Jeff have said, I, I don't get the impression that it's an underhanded, uh, project, but there are some people who do feel that way. And I think we'd have to absolutely push and push and push and make sure that that's not the way it goes again. I think we'd have to solicit a lot more input. If people were not interested in revamping the schools, then we would have to, we would have to show, what does it look like if we don't fix the schools? What are the costs? What, what is the impact of not doing this? If people decide that they want to pay teachers more instead, we'd have to, again, do a whole lot more market research, talk to the community, talk to people, talk to the, to the school communities. Surveys for the students maybe, what do the students prefer? I, I think they'd have to be just a little bit more inclusive this time and really just explicit with details and a whole lot of research to, to back it up.
If I remember correctly, your question dealt specifically with Central and the changes there, right?
With the old buildings.
That's what I'm going to focus on. Well, first thing we'd have to do is we'd have to get some kind of consultant or, uh, building inspectors in to look and tell us what parts are actually the worst, because we wouldn't have enough to do the whole building, so we'd have to prioritize it. What, what needs to be done first? How much is it going to cost to fix the fieldhouse? Maybe that's out of reach. Maybe they could do a half, so you can still have classes and activities on one half while then we pair it together. Auto shop, could they expand that a little bit? Because it's such a great auto shop over there. The classrooms, when we went through it, the classrooms looked adequate. Then when you look at some of the ice, other high schools that have been through, it's like looking at a log cabin, looking at the Oval Room at the White House, that they're just, there's no comparison. And I'd like to see the staff interviewed, you know, if you teach a history class, what can we do in your class? What would you like to have? Maybe the room is good, but you need a whiteboard or you need a projector or, or anything like that, just to make the resources better for the students.
All right. The next question will be by Isabel.
Looking back, how do you feel the West Alice, West Milwaukee School District handled the pandemic?
Mr. Ustruck, let's start with you. Sorry about that.
Uh, boy, um, there's clearly some things that we need to learn from, uh, the way we handle things. I mean, I, from a perspective of my kids were prior to the pandemic, really good grades and attending and involved in school and, and my wife teaches and so I would come home sometimes and I, you know, both my kids are sleeping and it's noon and I'm like, what are we doing? You know, and, and if my kids with my wife being home are really struggling with this stuff, I can't imagine a kid who's a seven-year-old, who has a two-year-old sister and a one-year-old brother, who's single parent is working and they have to try to do second grade and watch, you know? So, there was a lot of things that I think we learned from it and I think we don't brush it under the table like it never happened. We prepare because ultimately we have to be ready for it if it happens again and we have to be ready and be better prepared. And I think we are. I think we've learned. I think prior to the pandemic, things were really, our district and our, our marks were really moving in the right direction and we really got knocked through the pandemic. So, I hope that we've learned through it. I think we have. We've discussed it. We communicate. You know, it, it hasn't been easy. And so, we're going to move forward and look through the windshield.
I feel like the district handled it about as well as could be expected. At the time that it hit, I was working with the, I think I'd mentioned it, with the Wisconsin Medicaid Plan, so all my friends were local, um, all the people I was working with were local. And I was hearing stories from people in neighboring districts where there was absolutely nothing happening. There was no instruction, there was no engagement, there was no plan, there was nothing at all. Our district, our district was able to send tablets home and, uh, there, there was an effort. There, we, we didn't miss a beat. It was available, it was online. And from what I understand, there were, uh, they were offering hotspots to families who did not have internet access. That was probably the toughest one to overcome. And that, that was one that I'm sure, as Bill said really clearly, I think there's families who struggled a lot more than, than others. And, and that's, that's the real tragedy is that the, the families who are, were already struggling, um, took another big hit, so that was tough. And I don't know, uh, without being in the environment of the schools, I'm not sure how much more they could have done or how they could have done it differently. Uh, one of the things I like is that they have, over time, changed the way that, uh, that, that the schools were run. They did get us back in person last spring, um, then, and the fall prior to that, the instruction improved, the teachers were online all day. I think they did a good, a good job with that. And recently, we've, we've moved to a more flexible mask policy, which I think, I think it reflects a good bit of, of discussion and evidence.
I'm very proud of what we did during the pandemic. Not saying we did the greatest, but I think, as Joe said, we did what we had to do and did what we could do. I come from a family where there were a lot of teachers. And two of my cousins, one of my sisters resigned in the middle of it. They said, I'm not, I was never trained in this virtual stuff. I'm out of here. Or we had the foresight at the end of the semester to take the summer and work on virtual curriculum so that the teachers coming back in the fall, we're prepared. Because when we first went virtual, it's kind of like, hmm, all right, let's throw these papers up in the air and they stay up there, we did a good job. If they hit the floor, we got to start working better. But, uh, there's no, I shouldn't say no because it's, but I, I would bet most of my, that's check, that at least 75% of the schools in this state were not happy with what they did. Were parents disappointed in what we could do? Well, sure, there's not a person around or on the board or that's in education that would say it's better off to do virtual than to see kids face-to-face. That's what it's about. It's a, it's a people business. You want to be with them. And when they're on a computer at home, you don't know if they're with you or daydreaming.
Well, it certainly could have been worse. Um, I think for what it was, you know, I mean, we managed. I think, you know, our teachers, I mean, I, I give them props, I don't know what I would have done in that situation. I, you know, yeah, I think under the circumstances, I mean, there was definitely no handout that says, here's how you manage a pandemic. So unfortunately, everybody was just kind of, you know, managing with what they had. I personally think it went on too long. I definitely think it could have ended far sooner than it did. That's just my opinion. I think it did a lot of damage in the sense of, you know, the academics and stuff for kids. You know, I just look at my children and, I mean, and they managed, I mean, they, you know, their grades were still fine, but even though their grades showed that they did well, they themselves admitted that they didn't get nearly as much out of their schooling as what they know they would have had they been in the classroom. So, that's extremely unfortunate, you know, and I don't, I don't blame, you know, the teachers or anything like that. I mean, it's, it's circumstances, but it's just unfortunate. So, I mean, we did the best with what we had, I just think it could have ended a lot sooner
The next question will be by Morgan.
All right. So what discipline or disciplines should there be for students that get into fights? Mr. Becker, you can go first.
Uh, the last time I got in a fight, I was 13 and the reason it was my last fight is I broke my hand and I couldn't play basketball for about a month and a half. It really improved my left. But every year prior to that, I was good for a fight or two on the playground every single year. The, um, the thing about a kid who's getting into a fight is that it's oftentimes not a kid who's going around just looking to bully somebody. A lot of the time, it's a kid who's getting picked on or somebody who's got something else going on at home. So, as far as discipline, the first thing that needs to happen is that this dude needs to be removed from the classroom environment. I know that there's, uh, an alternative for kids who have been expelled over at the 1205 70th Building and I think that's a fantastic way to deal with kids who have chronic issues. I think, I think the discipline needs to be that you figure out through the counseling and through the, the mental health, uh, resources that the district has, why is that kid fighting? I don't think that expulsion and banishing the child to, to a different district because they may have some underlying issues or concerns or, or socially emotional issues that are being overlooked or haven't been addressed or they've been going on for years or they didn't have a dad who told them, stop fighting.
Again, the question was discipline for kids fighting.
Yes.
That's what I'll address. We have a flow chart for the district and in the schools on what happens when this situation occurs, you do this, you involve these people, and then there's steps where, depending on the severity of the offense, you bring in the parents or if need be, situation escalates and you need to get the liaison officer or even the police over to the building. You have to do that, but it's, it's all spelled out. And unless that would change over the course of time, I would expect our administrators to be following that. It's pretty cut and dry. It's, it's a no-brainer. Even if you weren't a teacher, you could walk in and read it and know what you have to do. So that would be the discipline.
Do you think the, people are, schools are talking about how they're giving out tickets as like a discipline for a fight? Do you think that's like adequate? Because the parents are.
I'd have to see some data on that, on whether it's working. And if the same kid is getting ticket after ticket, well, we're just wasting paper.
Well, and like you said, the parent actually has to pay the ticket. Yeah. Yeah. So, like you say, that's, I mean, in some situations, I mean, it stems from how it's handled at home, so sometimes I think it's kind of fair if there's a ticket issued and it sort of falls on the parent because the parent might very well be part of the problem. So, but I think sometimes doing just things I've witnessed, I don't always feel that administration is following the flow chart, that it's actually being followed through either from things I've witnessed. So, I think part of it is follow-through, um, because I know I've witnessed it, at least at the high school level, um, that follow-through is extremely inadequate. So, I think that's a big part of the problem. And I, you know, I, I think a lot of the adults need to be held accountable, both at home and in the school, you know? I think there, kids are being allowed to rule the roost and it's, that's not how it's supposed to be, you know? And I think it's time, you know, and I'm not one of those, you know, lay it out in the law kind of a thing, but I mean, if you let them get away with it and they continue to, well, the problem's only going to get bigger and worse. And, you know, and, and the younger it starts, then the worse it gets, you know? So, it's kind of like at the, you know, at the elementary school, if you don't start there and start, you know, stop these problems then, it's only going to magnify. And again, I've had kids in this district for a long time. My oldest son's 19 now, so I've been around it for a while too and I've seen it. So, it happens.
You know, I, I tend to agree with what Jeff says about like a flow chart, but I don't know that there really is, I mean, we have our policies and, and we want to follow our policy, policies, but at some point in time, I don't know what year it began, but, you know, interpreting the policies and interpreting how, how these incidents are, where they stem from started becoming more important than the actual physicality of the, the instances. And I, I don't know that we, you know, that, that we can really do that and allow these things to be subjective, because then you allow for interpretations and you allow for different outside circumstances to be put in. And I agree that those are circumstances that should be taken, mental health, you know, IEPs, cultural stuff, that sort of thing. But I think you got to cons, remain consistent with the penalty to the physical altercations. I can't, I don't think you can say, oh, this kid is, you know, has an IEP, so we can't do this, that and the other because he beat this kid and was stomping on his head 42 times and didn't let up. Well, that's because he doesn't have a dad. I can see the correlations and I understand those perspectives, but once these things are all subjective, then it, it's who's in charge is the one who decides. And I, I think we have to have a more strict, follow the guidelines and not be as subjective and, and stay consistent, no matter what the circumstances are, especially when there's physical violence.
All right. For the next question, we have Isabel.
How do you bridge the social and academic gaps so many students are experiencing after two years of distance learning?
Is that me?
Um, so, how do you bridge the soco, the social?
Am I up?
Um, yeah, Mr. Sickich, actually.
You're up.
Go to Mr. Sickich. Boy, if I could answer that, I'd be a rich person, because I could write a book about it. I don't know that there is a special, one-size-fits-all for those kind of situations. Different schools are going to handle it different, different teachers are going to handle it different. So, I would think you'd have to have some training by, by SEL people to handle some of that or give lessons. Maybe it's whether, how to cope with it. I don't know that you can cure it or fix it, uh, but it certainly could use to have a lid on it.
SEL?
Yeah. Social emotional learning? I'm sorry. No, but thank you for clearing it out. I should have said that. Not everybody knows what that is. My bad.
I still don't, but thank you.
They help with the kids that have problems dealing with the everyday interactions with kids from the, their social learning aspect and their emotional feelings. I can't tell you any more than that because I don't, wasn't around when I was in school.
Right, we sat in the principal's office.
Pretty much.
I hoped your dad wasn't home when you got home.
Yeah, I, as far as. Yeah, I, as far as how you bridge that gap, yeah, there isn't really a, a one answer fix, I don't think at all. And I think for some kids, you know, a matter of time in itself might just fix it. I mean, some might just be able to on their own kind of amend it, you know? But I think just having those, you know, SEL teachers or, I don't even know if it's the same thing in high school. I'm not even sure if that changes acronym or not in high school. But, you know, just having those people available to them, you know, I, I really don't know really what the answer is because everybody, everybody's situation's going to be different. Like I say, you know, some kids might not really be phased by it. Others, it might take months or longer, you know, for them to kind of get back into the balance again. So it, it's very much a, a, you know, each person, person by person basis as far as what it's going to take for them to kind of find that balance again and, and to bridge that gap. So I don't really think that you can find a, a one answer fits all type thing. But I think just having the, you know, access to the people or the groups or whatever that, that might be available in the schools to them is about the best that I can think of right now to offer them.
Yeah, I think that's a really good point. Uh, like, just being back is going to bridge the gap. Having that, that bond that we, that face to face that we need as human beings to have those emotions and, and feel a part of something. And then that takes me back to like the culture stuff and, and the buying into the community, the culture, you know? I really, when I started six years ago and they started talking about community and restorative practices, I was like, what are, what's, what are we talking about here? But I started to kind of open my mind up to that type of thinking of, of getting people to buy into being a, a part of the community. And then when, and when you feel involved and you feel a part of something, just like with the teacher question, if the students feel like they're valued and they're, they have these relationships with, in the building with adults and with other, their peers, and they feel safe, I think those are the things that are going to bridge the gap. Because then they're going to, they're back. I'm back. I can go visit my, my, you know, English teacher who I love, who I would just go for 15 minutes. I mean, this is a true story. I, everyone hated her. I loved her and I would stop. I'd eat lunch in her room. I wrote poetry. I, just things I never thought I'd do because of this English teacher I had. And it was a relationship I never thought I would have. And those are the things that I think we need to, that will come back now that we're back together. And those are the things that I think we should focus on in building those relationships. And that'll just naturally bridge the gap.
I scribbled down a few notes here, and I guess what it comes down to, well, my wife and I have talked about a lot during the whole experience is that, yes, academically, it's not ideal. We understood that we had to supplement and we understood that we were going to have to take their mental health into account. So we made sure we had a little play group. We had a couple neighbors with kids who were similar age. We kept our circle really small, but we, we knew we didn't want them to be isolated. So what we've always talked about is how much they've learned from the experience. I think if we engage the kids in whether it's, whether it's a written exercise and then you implement some of the writing skills with a writing project that asks them to reflect what you, what have you learned about? What have you learned from this pandemic? How, where did you see yourself being in two years versus where you are right now? Ask them to do some reflections on it, to think about it, to, to kind of face it and acknowledge that it was a traumatic experience, acknowledge that it has been difficult for everybody. I think when you share those kinds of experiences, it, it will draw you together. I think as a couple of folks have said, over time, it will get better. Beyond that, I kind of wonder if something like what kids do in Japan, where there's one mandatory club that you have to belong to. If there's not one that you're interested in, create a club. Do something, whether it's one hour a week or two.
Thank you.
Can I keep you guys hydrated?
No, I appreciate it. I'm in two. Just kidding.
Oh, sure. Thank you.
Coming parched.
The next question will be by Shelley.
If you could sit down and have coffee or lunch with anyone in history, who would it be?
Oh my gosh. First it was the actress that played me, and now is who do I want to have coffee with? No, I can't pick her yet. Sorry.
Ms. Lee, go first.
Oh, no. I was already on to that.
Genghis Khan.
Oh my gosh. Oh my goodness. Um. Oh my gosh. Oh my gosh, there's so many to pick from. This is not easy. Ronald Reagan.
Interesting.
I, he clearly never knew the man, but, um, he's just, you know, I remember in school and stuff, I had picked a project in history and I had researched a lot of stuff on him and he was just, of all the presidents, he's, and somebody says, who is your favorite president, even though I wasn't around during his time, really, you know? He just, he's the one I always go to. So I would love to just sit down with him and pick his brain. So I would love to sit down with Ronald Reagan. Okay, well, beat that.
Still mine. Okay, no. I thought about Ronald Reagan just because Ronald Reagan, we have the same birthday. And just a quick story, when I was, he visited Methodist Manor back in like 1985, I want to say, somewhere right around there, and I, I was like 10. And I remember the president, you know, there, he, everything was going and I ran up because I lived in the neighborhood and I ran up and I saw him get out of the car. And like I, I waved at him. I thought he waved at me. So then I wrote him a letter because his birthday was the same day as mine and, you know, 10 years old, you don't know much about presidents. He's the president though, right? He handwritten me a letter back. So that was like the coolest thing I thought about Ronald Reagan. So sorry, but, uh, I would actually, you know, you could say like world leaders and that. I would sit down with like Babe Ruth, okay? Because I love baseball. I ultimately, I'm a, just baseball, I love baseball. And Babe Ruth also is born on February 6th, which is my birthday. But he is a, a generation transcender in the game of baseball at a time in which baseball was the American pastime. I mean, the pictures of Babe Ruth in a stadium, playing in a stadium packed full of people and men wearing fedora hats and wool coats and it's 90 degrees out. And he was getting paid, you know, the equivalent of a dollar 25 to play a game that he loved. And just to see how crazy that living that life at that moment was because nobody had done or had been a figure like that in history up to that point, where he was really the true first rock star that wasn't a rock star. But, uh, you know, a powerful person and personality in history and will forever be. So it'd be interesting to meet him in person. That'd be, that'd be cool.
So my Ronald Reagan story is that in third grade, we wrote, uh, letters, the entire class wrote letters to the president and they selected 10 of us to, to mail them. So we walked onto the corner, I mailed my letter, and I didn't get a handwritten letter. I feel a little bit, uh,
You don't cherish birthdays.
I feel something about that. I don't know what it is. But, uh, I got a glossy little pamphlet on who Ron Reagan was and I found out he was a college football player. I remember there was a picture of him as a, it looked like he was falling through on a punt. So that's my Ronald Reagan story. But I, I was thinking maybe, uh, Isaac Newton, but he wasn't the most accessible guy. So I went with Albert Einstein. When I decided to quit teaching, I was sitting at home one night grading papers, watching PBS because I refused to pay for cable. And it was a Nova episode on the elegant universe. That's a story about string theory, which is, uh, is a modern theory of everything for the physical universe. It's based on, at least in parts, some of what Albert Einstein had to do. And even though he denies the, the reality of quantum mechanics, which is the most highly successful scientific theory of all time, I still think it would be really interesting to sit down with the kind of a person who's so brilliant that he bought the same suit five or six times so he didn't have to spend any brain power thinking about what he was going to put on that day. He, um, he mapped out the entire reality of the universe. And he corrected Isaac Newton, who I've, I've heard described as probably one of the most brilliant minds ever. As Bill said too, that takes you back to sometime around 1905, if you go and buy his, his first ground, groundbreaking paper. And I could get to see another rock star baseball player, Kristi Mathieson. So that would be pretty good, I think.
That is the easiest question you asked me tonight. Without a doubt, it would be Vincent T. Lombardi. I am a huge football fan, but besides that, he is a man. Took teams, just kind of really beat them up. Yet when you hear these guys talk about him, they loved him. He got everything he could out of every individual on his team. And I always thought when I coached, boy, if I could do that, I, I would be really happy. Don't know that I ever achieved that goal. So yeah, I don't need to tell you how good he was with the Packers. So after he resigned from the Packers, he stays on as general manager for a while. Phil Bengtson came as coach. He didn't like what he was doing, so he took a job with the Washington Redskins. And they were bottom feeders at the time. They turned the whole program around in one year. Their great linebacker, Sam Huff, was going to quit. And when he heard that Lombardi, excuse me, that when Lombardi was going to go there, he called his wife. He says, honey, I got to play one more year for this guy. See what he's like. And they interviewed him in this show and other Washington Redskins. And if you didn't, if you couldn't see and were just listening to what they were saying, you would think they're Green Bay Packers because he didn't change anything about himself. He knew who he was. He knew how he could get it done. He was a leader. He was a teacher. He was a humanitarian. He called President Kennedy and was able to get Paul Horning to play in a playoff game. What guy can just call them, that's not a politician, hey, Jack, can you get Paul in a game for me or we're going to lose? That, no, Vince Lombardi.
She's like, who's Vince Lombardi?
It wasn't.
Vince who?
All right. Next up, we have Kayla.
Can the school board enforce policies on school employees like principals or administrators? Uh, Mr. You struck, you go first.
Can the school board enforce policies?
Yeah, on school employees like principals or administrators.
You kind of taped her off at the end of that question. Your voice, can you say it?
Yeah. Um, can the school board enforce policies on school employees like principals or administrators?
Well, we create the policies and ultimately Lexman enforces the policies and then we are his boss. So, you know, the hier, hierarchy is we are his boss and he, you know, there's a pro, process that you have to go through. So enforcing the policy on, I mean, it goes to him ultimately and then to us.
He wasn't enforcing it, yes, definitely. Like if there was some sort of way where like policy department enforced by, there's no enforcement, the school board would be able to.
We'd have to know, or hear the facts.
Yeah.
But we could. I have some of those bills.
Yeah, I mean, yeah. I mean, if there's stuff like that, absolutely. I mean, within the policies, yeah.
My understanding is that, just as Bill said, the, the board has, um, has direct supervision over the superintendent, but it would be an indirect supervision over the administrators.
Yes, we do. As Bill said, the hierarchy is the board, but it's the board as a group, as the nine people. Individually, we have absolutely no power at all, except when we meet as a group. And then we only have the power to control what's on that agenda. If it's not on the agenda, we can't talk about it. But we also evaluate the superintendent once a year. It's a lengthy process. He, in turn, evaluates all the administrators. Some principals will take a load off of Dr. Lexman and review or evaluate their own assistant administrators, assistant principal or whatever. And he also evaluates all the elementary principals. So everybody gets evaluated as to teachers by their superiors, but it's a trickle down thing.
I agree with what Dave said because I'm too new to know any different. So I agree with them. I know, right? It's the easy way out, man.
The next question will be by Alicia.
Going into the next year, what are your thoughts on bringing back block scheduling along with Wednesdays being a workday at home for high schools? Mr. Becker, you can go first.
As far as the block schedules, I've heard some mixed feelings on it. I was at a DOTKEY PTSA meeting and there were a lot of good thoughts on it. The issue from a teacher's perspective is that you start a lesson, you teach the concept, and students are just starting to, to move into it and display a little bit of mastery. And then the bell rings and then you don't get to everybody. So the advantage from that perspective, I think, is that absolutely it could, it should lead to greater mastery throughout a classroom instead of kids who catch on quickly mastering and moving on and other kids not, not achieving mastery and going home and struggling, shutting down, not learning. As, as far as the student perspective, I'm sure that especially when there's a bad, and when there's a teacher, I wouldn't say bad teacher, I'm sure if there's a teacher who you're not interested in listening to, it could be a difficult situation. So from that perspective, I can understand there would be challenges. I'd be curious to see what the results are, if we can have a measurable understanding of which one, even if it's a pilot for a year, see how it works, see how it impacts scores. That could be good. I'd say a similar thing for a Wednesday workday. It would depend on what kind of performance we were seeing before and what kind of performance we would see afterwards before I could really make a good decision on that. It seems like it could be good, but it could also be abused terribly.
Can I just answer that one next Wednesday morning to know if I'm on the board or not? Just kidding. I would want to see data. Block scheduling versus the normal eight, seven hour day, whatever it is. I would also like to, if there'd be, if we would be able to hold a forum with teachers from districts that do block scheduling, to hear from the teachers, not the administrators, from the teachers that are teaching the classes, if they'd like to do it or not do it. I would, they're the ones in the trenches doing the work. So just because an administrator says, oh, this is a really good idea. Well, you know, they're not in the class with, with the kids, so that doesn't hold much water for me. But teachers aren't going to lie about it. So that's where I would want to be.
My first reaction is, oh God, no. Um, and I'm basing that off of my kids' feedback from when they went through it this past year. And so basing it, and of course, you know, whatever for my kids. So, um, but like for my one son, you know, his main, I think his main thing, the main reason that he had said that was because he had a couple of classes that were more of a struggle for him. And he said, you know, when we do the block scheduling and I've got this class and then I've got three days before I go back to it, he's like, the retention is really tough. I've got three days before I go back to it," he's like, "The retention is really tough." You know, and so he's like, "It's just not enough time, you know, to be able to really learn it and then you've got three days in between." And so for him, that was really a struggle. And I'm going, "Oh, yeah, okay, I completely understand that." Now, if it's a class you breeze through, you know, no problem. So, you know, for anybody that really, you know, seemed to struggle in a class, I can completely understand how that was really, that's a really tough concept. He also, there was a couple of times where he had come home and there was actually a couple of teachers that he had heard say that they, that the teachers had had a hard time coming up with like, you know, schedules and plans for the day for that amount of time in some of these classes. I don't recall which ones those were. So, you know, again, just some feedback I got, but I thought, "Oh, okay, well, that's an interesting concept," you know. So, you know, again, definitely something that would maybe be worth having like a forum to get some feedback from teachers, but also from students. Because again, it's a situation not everybody might learn real well that way. So, worth looking into.
I would defer to teachers, like my wife's a teacher and her friends, and I would, I'd gather the information on how they feel about it. I don't, I'm not a educational professional. I did graduate with a bachelor's in science in education and I did want to be a teacher, but my path did not take me down that path. Well, it did for the first three years of my professional career. So I'm not an expert in it. I don't know the innuendos of what a block schedule means. I've heard some people say that it's associated with downsizing and trying to staff reduction and stuff like that. So I would defer to really what the teachers, and my stance has always been with the teachers. You know, I'm a big supporter. Obviously, my wife is a teacher, so I would listen to what she has to say. And I don't tell her this, I don't know if she's watching, but she is right on a lot of things we discuss when it comes to some of these ideas. And, you know, I have a very unique lens on trying to be school board and my business background and her as a teacher and I was a teacher, so we bounce a lot of things off of each other. And as far as the Wednesday off, you know, I don't, I would have a hard time every Wednesday having a day off for high schoolers. I could see it maybe once a month or once a quarter or something like that and start with that. I would not want to jump into every Wednesday. I think there's, in our community, there's just a lot of families that probably wouldn't benefit from the Wednesday. There are families that would benefit from somebody being home on a Wednesday, you know, but I can't see it every single week and that being a permanent thing.
All right, next up we have Susha.
Tell us one thing about yourself that no one else in this room can say that they've done. Mr. Sickitt, you can go first.
Married my wife. Nobody else has done it, at least that I'm aware of. I guess what surprises a lot of people when they get to know me is, besides when I was in high school, I was like the Jack and all that. But I also had the lead in the musicals and in the plays. And I was accepted to the Goodman School of Acting in Chicago. But I thought, "Well, I just do this because it's fun. I don't want to do it like for a career." And if it had been a sport, I might have wanted to do that. It's a good thing I wasn't a professional athlete because I hate to fly. And I'd always be late for the games because I'd have to be driving or taking the bus.
Okay, well, you might have gotten a school of acting, but were you on the Jerry Springer Show like I was? So many of them are made up. I do not tell this to a lot of people. So if my husband's watching, he's probably dying that I actually admitted that. So, yeah, I had a friend. I know, I kind of am too. I had a friend who was friends with producers and apparently they needed more, you know, fake stories. And he's like, "Hey, it's a weekend in Chicago paid for." He's like, "You want to go?" I said, "Sure." So I did. It was a hoot.
That's good stuff.
I talked about a little earlier, 11th grade English class, Ms. Veronki. She was not well-liked. I loved her. She got me into poetry. I thought I was a rapper. I had a notebook and I just wrote rhymes. And so she introduced me to Gertrude Stein. And I don't know if anybody knows who Gertrude Stein is, but she is a, the wackiest poet you've ever seen in your life. You read her stuff and, you know. So I at first started writing these poems as a way to just kind of poke a little fun at Gertrude Stein. And then it became like, "That's what I did." And I won the Gertrude Stein Award in 11th grade for English. And nobody ever in their mind thought that Bill Eustreck would win the Gertrude Stein Poetry Award at Nathan Hale High School. And I did. And it's one of my proudest moments. And Ms. Veronki, I knew she loved me. I knew she loved me and that was probably one of the coolest things to know that that woman loved me like I loved her. And she didn't love a lot of people. So, you know, that was one of my greatest high school accomplishments.
I tried to think of something I was, nobody would possibly have done. So I got to go with the backflip I did off of a boat in the middle of Halong Bay in 2002. My wife and I, girlfriend at the time, she was living in Japan. Right after she graduated, I went over there for her second year. And we decided to take a 10-day trip to Vietnam. We were staying in Hanoi and they have cafe tours there. So we did one for a couple of days where we got to stay with the family on the farm. And we did another one, which was a boat tour. So we spent one night in the boat. Spent the three days out on the water. And at one point, they stopped the boat and said, "Okay, if you want to jump on swim, go ahead." So we're jumping off the sides and then I did a backflip and jumped off the top of the boat another time after that. In hindsight, it was probably about the dumbest, most dangerous thing I possibly could have done. Just, I could have hit my head on the side of the boat. Stuck out in the middle, a couple of miles offshore. So, yeah, yeah, bad decision.
The next question will be by Lily.
If anything, what would you change about the implementation of school resource officers? Should they be at intermediate schools as well? Ms. Lee, you can go first.
And it's, should they be at intermediate schools as well?
Yes.
Yeah, I think these days, yeah, I do feel that it is, I wish it wasn't necessary, but I do feel in this day and age that it is far more necessary. And even if it's not, I think it's just good for students to see them there. So, you know, I wish it was something we didn't need to have, but I do think that it helps and it gives the sense, a little more sense of security for students and stuff these days. So I do like the fact that they're there. Yeah.
Yes, I agree 100% that I think they should be there. I think they should be in intermediate schools. I believe that the SRO has a responsibility. I don't know if it's in their job description, but I think they're, they're there to be a positive influence. If we allow them to be viewed as a negative influence in the building, then we're doing it incorrectly. We need the SROs in the buildings to create relationships with some of these kids and to create positive relationships with these kids and allow them to maybe view police and officers in a much different light than they would normally have these types of relationships with these officers. So I think it's the responsibility of the SRO to kind of build, you know, you're not just a police officer in a school. That's, that really shouldn't be what that role is. That role is to be a positive role model, mentor. You know, you build relationships with these kids almost like a teacher, almost like you're another guidance counselor, you're another part of the faculty, you're another part of that administration, and you should view it that way. And if the community and the culture in the building is that, then it's a positive experience. But if you have a chaotic culture and community in your building that is in constant flux and the SRO is the one who's called in when there's just fights and just chaos, well, then it's going to be viewed in a negative sense. So I think it starts with the building culture and the relationship and try to work towards it being a positive.
When I learned a few months ago that there actually is an officer in the high schools, it was news to me. My kids, again, are only fifth graders, so I haven't been in any of these middle schools during school hours. I haven't been in any of the high schools. It's something that I felt, I'm very curious and it's something that I would definitely want to do, but I felt as a candidate, it was, it maybe was a little bit overstepping to request to go in and tour them. To really have a good handle on it, I would like to go into those schools. My gut says I don't really like it. I feel like if you set the, it's like we talk about the expectation of grades. We expect you to be good and we expect you to achieve and shoot high. It feels like putting an armed officer in a school is setting the bar low, like we expect you guys to be violent as opposed to we expect you to behave. The time that I worked as a, my last year at the school at Atlas Preparatory, when I was, I wasn't teaching anymore. I was in a jack-of-all-trades role, kind of a quasi-administrative role. We'd gone from 170 students to 350 students. We'd incorporated ninth grade. None of the kids were from our school or most of them weren't. So there was a lot of chaos at the start. What we did is we built better processes and we did a little bit better job of keeping adults' eyes and it would be a little bit more present in the hallways. And through a little bit more supervision, we were able to calm it down. I'd like to try that first before we put an officer in a middle school.
I'm 100% for both personally. As a board member, I'd want to hear some testimony from the administrators in the different buildings, junior high and high school, to see what their thoughts on it. Are there positives? Are there negatives that we may not see as a board? And if they were for it, I would be supporting them 100%. They're the ones in the building. They know what's going on. I don't, I just hear about it. And I'm hoping what we hear all the time is true. But that's all.
So for our last question of the evening, if the referendum passes, what should the school be called and what should the mascot be?
I know, I'm sorry. It's a creative, unique one for the ending. But we're starting with Mr. Eustreck, so you have a little time to think about it.
Goodness.
I have not thought about it at all. I mean, well, I have not thought about a name. I think that's up to the community. Like I want, the cherry on the cake would be everybody having some sort of cool contest and make it the community school, you know? And what do we want to name it? I don't care what I want to name it. You know, what do we, if it passes, what do, or I've heard the freshman class gets to name it or the school first class is in there, get to name it. I think they got to name Nathan Hale or, you know, I want the, I'd love for the community to name it. I, maybe something to our West Dallas Chalmers, you know, past, that sort of thing. You know, I don't know. Something like that. But I think the kids and the community should name it, really.
For the name of the high school, I think just West Dallas High. I think just call it what it is. That's the, that's the high school. That's the main public high school. That's fine. I don't think we need to be overly creative with just the name of the school. And for the mascot, I have to, one of my best friends is a lifelong, he was born over on 60th Street, went to Horace Mann, went to Central. He introduced that term to me about 20 years ago, stallion. I feel like the stallions would be kind of a winking at the camera, but also, but also a strong one.
How does the word or the school, Dan Devine High School sound?
Yeah, there we go.
Just kidding, Ben.
Keeps doing good stuff.
Quick, short story. When Frank Lloyd Wright first opened up at the old Nathan Hale, which is now the new Central, I was one of the first classes in there. And it was just open. Hale was out, they were in the new building. And everybody in our school, we named Frank Lloyd Wright. It was the seventh, eighth and ninth graders. We picked the school colors, black and orange or gold, whatever it was called. And we had the Wildcats. It was, it was so cool to be a kid and be involved in something like that. But when you're talking about a whole city school...
Who gets all this extra attention? Make her...
You're on this.
What can I do wrong? What? Oh, wow, I take my time. Because it's the whole school, I think the city should have, the people of the city, not the council, should have some kind of say in how to do it. Now, I was on the board when we purchased a lane again from, I forget what it was.
Heritage Christian.
Heritage Christian, thank you. And we had two meetings about, "What should we call it? What should we call it?" I'm like, "I mean, what should we call it? No matter what we name it, people are going to go, 'Oh, you mean the old lane? Let's just call it Lane again.'" It's not like rocket science. But when you're dealing with something, we're merging two buildings together, it's not that easy to do. We really haven't given any thought and discussion on a name because that's about the last thing we need to do. Doesn't make any difference what we, our name picks. We pick out if the referendum doesn't go. Yeah, so if you don't like Frank Lloyd Wright or the colors or the mascot, blame me.
My kids and I were actually just, it came up at dinner the other night and so we were talking about it and we just said how, "Well, because you've got the Huskies and the Bulldogs, you're kind of in the family of the animals and whatever." And so we said, "Oh, something like that." We had always kind of joked with the new restaurant that they're putting up over on Highway 100 and I don't even know what that little street is over there. It used to be the old, oh, I don't know, by Home Depot and stuff over there. But we said, "Oh, it should be like Dog Pound, you know, because you've got the Huskies and the Bulldogs and stuff." And so we were just kind of, you know, commenting on stuff like that. So we didn't actually come up with anything, but we said something like that, some four-legged furry would be a great idea. But I do, I love the idea of, because with this whole, the schools coming together and my, you know, I've always said to my kids, you know, there's always been such a separation in West Dallas and just this ugliness, at least since I've, my kids have been born and going to school and I don't even know where the heck it started from. I still don't. And I said, you know, so just trying to get everybody to come back together as one and bring the unity back, I said, "It'd be so nice." So I think coming together and letting everybody have an opinion and coming up with a name, I think would be a good start to it, you know? So I think I like that idea of everybody, you know, trying to have input into coming up with a name together and the colors and stuff would be a great idea. So I'm totally up for that, too.
What would you call it?
What I call it? I don't know. I'm a senior, I'm graduating.
It no longer matters.
I asked it, but we all made it together.
Any ideas?
The Pack.
The what?
Mascot, uh, Pack.
Packers?
No, no.
The Pack? Oh, like a, like a pack?
Oh, like a dog.
Yeah, like a dog pack.
Oh, see, no, I, see, it's on that same line. I like that.
I like that thinking.
It'll always be the old Nathan Hale, that's what it was.
I see.
You know, it's where your memories are at.
And you could just do like the paw, yeah, I like that.
Amazing job to all the candidates and thank you so much on the behalf of the Youth Commission for taking the time to come and address our questions.
We want to wish you all the best with the election coming up and we want to lastly remind everyone to make sure to vote on April 5th.
Thank you, everybody, for coming.
Thank you.